Hear the bell ring? Okay, all right. Start then with, do I have a motion to reconvene to regular meeting?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Travis and seconded by Mr. Lewandowski. All right, roll call. Shaw?
Here.
Lewandowski?
Here.
Navarro?
Here.
Johnson? Ives?
Here.
Travis?
Here.
Lopez Knievel. Here, so the regular session reconvene at 7:01 PM. We will start with our pledge allegiance and if you will now, Gabe Ralfo, if you can lead us in our pledge, please.
The allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we begin with our resolutions, I'd like to, on behalf of the Board of Education, I'd like to congratulate our superintendent on his graduation from the Illinois School of Organized Leadership.
Yeah, thanks.
And we congratulate you on that.
Oh, thanks a lot.
You're welcome, but yes.
It was, it was two years that went by quickly.
Yes, yes, we're very proud of you.
Thank you, thanks for your support as board members, you know, allowing me to do that and I was glad and maybe not glad to be not visiting Springfield so often, so there's a lot of time down in Springfield.
A lot to celebrate, okay, now we can do our resolutions. Yes, go ahead.
Come up or? Yeah, why don't you come on up, you know, Gabe, join Mr. Dwyer at the table, we'll, we'll kind of get you, you know, and I know Mrs. Castillo, or in this case, Dr. Hudson might be taking a photo op after the resolution.
All right. Good evening, thank you for this opportunity to recognize, can I go off script real quick, probably one of the most decorated athletes, student athletes in Lockport history, so super excited here to honor Gabe Zaco. Whereas Lockport Township High School's senior student athlete, Gabe Zaco, was named All-State Track and Field in the 110 and 300 Intermediate hurdles at the IHSA All-State Track and Field Championship, earning these distinguished honors on May 28th, 2022, at Eastern Illinois in Charleston. Whereas coaches Tom Razzo and Brett Hespel have aided and guided Gabe Zaco in his successes as Lockport Township High School District 205 athlete. Now, therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that Gabe Zaco is hereby recognized for his outstanding achievements and dedication to his school, family, and community, and that this resolution was passed by the Board of Education, Lockport Township High School District 205, this 20th day of June, 2022.
And Gabe, who are you with, with these fine folks that you have brought with you, supporters?
Super fans.
Yeah.
My parents and my brother, Grayden.
All right, yeah.
He was also quite a hurdler himself.
Quite a hurdler, and, and just so folks don't, you know, folks know, I do not think, I've been in public education for, this is the end of my 33rd year, and I cannot think of a single athlete who earned two state trophies in the same season in the fall. Gabe played varsity soccer, deadly on the field, fabulous, third place state finish, key player in that, and then state champion in football, he also played football, our conference and the state allows for that, amazing, and then to turn around and, and really be one of the, the best high hurdlers that we've seen in the state in a, in a long time, being a, a former track man myself. Gabe, what are you doing in the fall?
I'm going to Cornell University to run track.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Student as well as athlete, for sure.
Yes, excellent, yeah, congratulations.
You said you played in the, on the football team?
Mm-hmm.
What was your position?
I was the kicker.
He was the kicker, yeah, I remember that, we were, we were a little bit nervous when it was that soccer game and you were not coming.
Yeah, so we, we need to get all of you here, you know, everybody together.
All right, ready, one, two, three. Congratulations.
Yeah, good job. And then Mike, do you want to read McKenna, we usually, even if the athlete can't make it, we go ahead and read it in the record and then the, the board votes on both resolutions, so just, just to acknowledge her accomplishment.
I practiced for last thing all day, so.
You got to put that to work.
I got to put it to work. All right, we're recognizing another student athlete here, whereas Lockport Township High School junior student McKenna Scochillis was named All-State Pole Vault, third place at the IHSA All-State Track and Field Championship, earning this distinguished honor, May 21st, 2022, at Eastern Illinois University in Charleston. And whereas coaches Joe Kravitz and Jason Ferriery have aided and guided McKenna in her successes as a Lockport Township High School District 205 athlete. Now therefore be it resolved by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, Will County, Illinois, that McKenna Scochillis is hereby recognized for her outstanding achievements and dedication to her school, family, and community, and that this resolution was passed by the Board of Education, Lockport Township High School District 205, this 20th day of June, 2022.
Thank you, all right, congratulations to McKenna, all right.
Do you want to, do you want to do roll call on both resolutions?
Yes, do I have a motion to accept the resolutions as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay, it's been motioned by Mr. Lewandowski and seconded by Dr. Shaw, roll call. Navarro?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Lopez Knievel?
Yes.
Okay, all right, now Dick Ives and Dr. Veronica Shaw has been joining us via conference and saw in absence of Dr. Shaw, I appoint Mr. Michael Travis as the Board Secretary for this meeting, is that okay?
That's fine.
All right, okay, thank you. All right, moving on then to our reports, we don't have a student government.
Do you have one mention about student reports, just for board members, if I could very quickly, thank you, Mr. Dwyer.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dwyer.
During the summer, the three summer months, we do not have student reports from student government or student equity action committee, but I just want to share with all the board members an idea that I, I talked to Ann Lopez Knievel about and Dick Ives, and I've talked to our administrative team as well, and that's the idea that many boards have, of having a non-voting, non-closed session, student members of the Board of Education. These are students who would sit at this table with you for open session, one of the things we talked about in our administrative team was having a term for an East Campus student that would go from August to June, and then a student at Central that would go from January, so they could get a little bit of time as a freshman, understand a little bit about the district, January to December of the next year. So you'd get that perspective of the student who had, you know, been both at Central and come over to East. Just wanted to share that right now, it's one way that you can have students present, you can have students involved and have their voice in some of the really important decisions you make.
Would they be talking, would they be just listening?
They, they'd be listening, they'd be asking questions, they'd, you know, they would be doing what, what appointed members at the table would do.
But they would not be voting.
But they would not be voting, because they're not elected officials, but many Boards of Education have student members and have a process to appoint student members, and so we can talk about that more over the summer, but just an idea to put out there, you know, I just think it's always important that we're, we're thinking, we're mindful, that, that, that students are the reason that we're here, and they're the ones living the experience, and, and sometimes some of the agenda items that flow through us have really resonated with them.
I think that's a good idea, you have a voice, you can, you know, hear from them, it'll be more.
Yes.
Understanding how they're thinking.
And just letting you know that we're, we're having a conversation about it, obviously letting our public know as well, so, thank you.
Yes, and I believe this individual will be chosen, not by us, by, I believe student government, right?
Or a, a process that you, that you as board put in place, that you feel is a good process at Central, good process at, at East.
All right, thank you, all right, and there's no AFT report, okay, anything from the IASB report other than this joint annual conference, they're starting to register for the pre-conference, did everyone get that?
Yeah, there's a sheet just for the IASB conference, and in your folder, Mr. Travis is holding it, there is a very detailed explanation about COSPA, which IASB is joining with, I think, 20-plus other states to form a different national organization than MSBA, the state of Illinois has left. So I do want to let the board know that we, unless directed differently, did not plan on joining National School Board Association since the Illinois Association of School Boards is no longer a member of that, didn't really seem to make sense to join that, we'll probably be hearing more about joining COSPA, and then obviously the board can decide if you just want to be members of a state organization, or if you want to be members of the national organization as well.
So we can only choose one?
Well, if we, if we choose, I would recommend that you only choose one, because if we choose National School Board Association, it would have no affiliation with our state, so you belong to two organizations that don't really talk to each other. Not impossible, but might not be the most sort of efficient use of your membership, so, there's, and I, I think really the sheet that you have in there is the Illinois Association of School Boards reaching out to you as board members saying, why, why should you join COSPA, not NSBA? So that obviously would be up to you, which national, even if you want to be in a national organization, you know, there's nothing that requires you to be in it.
If you can just get this as far as your conference for the triple I, you can get that to Kathy. Okay.
That'd be great.
All right, okay, foundation report.
I get to be Angela Adolf tonight, because one of the things that Angela Adolf does in her job as Foundation Director and Director of Development is she works with partners and she has a community event that, that, that we thought it was important that she was at tonight. So just a couple of things, Wednesday is the Foundation's annual golf outing, Angela was able to put together 22 sponsors, we have 70 golfers, raffle prizes, along with an opportunity for a 50-foot putt for $50,000, so I know I won't be making that. At June, the Board approved three new governing policies for spending the Board has been working on, each of its funds, the governing processes for spending, for endowment management, and for their investment management as well, they also adopted a budget for their coming fiscal year, which starts, their fiscal year starts in August by their bylaws. The Taste of Lockport is going to be a brand-new event, it's going to take place on Saturday, September 24th, Foundation's working very closely with the city of Lockport, basically if you imagine the area around City Hall, the Foundation's recruited a number of restaurants to set up booths, on that Saturday night, the band Maggie Speaks will be the headlining band, hoping it's the first of many, many years of a great, a great community event and a great fundraiser for the Foundation. Board does not meet in July, and their next board meeting is Tuesday, August 2nd.
How was the vendor's take for that?
Really just downtown Lockport, just the idea of Taste of Lockport, so there's no if, I, I think there's somebody that wants to vend, the Foundation would say, come on down.
Okay.
You know, probably the space, space the only limitation, Mr. Travis, right, you know, and although it's Taste of Lockport, you know that we really represent such a large footprint, right, and hoping this year to have a good event. It coincides with homecoming dance is the same night, so maybe that'd be a good alternative for parents who are dropping their kids off at homecoming night, and hopefully we'll get weather that's not quite this hot, but nice, and listen to a good band and, and, you know, patronize some local businesses, raise some money for the Foundation, so. We've got a lot of guidance from Lamont High School's foundation, they have an annual and very big Taste of La, of Lamont that is their signature fundraiser, so we're maybe giving it the same, same thought. Okay, that is the foundation report.
Thank you, all right, legislative report.
Legislative report, that's me as well, most of our, our state's politicians, being in Springfield last weekend, nobody is there, they are all on the campaign trail, no matter what party they belong to, and, but there were a few things right at the end of the regular session that I think are, are important to mention. One is a public act that creates a First Responder Mental Health Grant Program Act, and in essence what this does is it allows law enforcement agencies, fire protection districts, and school districts to be recipients to provide, basically learn more about mental health first aid. We're working with an organization called Kids Matter to partner with our Seven Feeder districts in the fall to offer a course for parents, staff members, board members if they like, called Adolescent Mental Health First Aid. I'm trained in mental health first aid in general, it's an ADR course to get certified, it's worth its weight in gold if you're working in a frontline public position. This grant to people who apply is intended to fund that kind of education. Another public act that has to occur by July 1, 2025, and I really credit Dr. Christophero and Dr. Huntington, we are way out ahead of this, but schools like ours, a high school, has to, as part of the Post-Secondary and Workforce Readiness Act, have to identify career pathways for their students. I've shared with the board, we already have six career pathways, partnerships set up in a number of those pathways, we've already started, as Mrs. Zaco knows, who's one of our school counselors, educating students on courses that line them up, so they get those career pathways, and the idea is that you get college and career experience before you leave high school, so when you make that decision after high school, it's a more informed decision. I'm looking at Mr. Dusterhoff, because his program with the technology assistance that you became familiar with is that idea, those students had real career experience in their, in their senior year, as well as an education that, that took them to places like U of I or Illinois State, and that's, that's, we're way ahead of that, I feel really good about that, but that's law now. Another public act waives all school fees for whose parents are veterans or active-duty military personnel and fall below the established federal poverty line. And then a final public act, this is Comprehensive Health Education Program, requires instruction specifically in mental health of how to access mental health services in the area in which you live. So our health classes would have to point out here in, you know, the zip codes we serve, if one was looking to acquire mental health services, how does one do that, where are those places, so, that's report. Right.
You got it.
And then public comments, at each regular open meeting, members of the public and district employees may address the school board during the public comments section of the agenda. Individuals appearing before the, the board are expected to respectfully follow the guidelines of Policy 2:230 and Policy 8:30 available upon sign-in. Public comments are important to the board, however, it is customary not to respond on issues until time has been taken to gather information and discuss all options. Lack of action or response does not imply lack of interest in the issues brought to the board, and first, let's see, we have, we have Ms. Tammy Hayes.
In the absence of Mr. Ives, I'm playing the five-minute role.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Hello?
I'll try to, when we get to like 30 seconds left, I'll just give it generally.
Okay, that's great, yes, my name is Tammy Hayes, I've been here before, I have to talk really fast today, because I'd like to talk on an agenda item and a non-agenda item, and I was told today that I'm allowed five minutes per person. So, my first order of business is, I am here to speak out against the national sex education standards. These standards were written by a non, non-for-profit advocacy group known as Future of Sex Education Initiative. This is something that the schools are voting on, and I know Lockport has not responded to people who have called and asked to ask if they are going to opt into this. What I want is for the school boards to seriously consider opting out of this, national sex education standards, and not only that, but I think that it would be very grand of you to go ahead, like other schools have done, for example, Coal City, I would like for you to go ahead and put it out there publicly that you are not going to adopt these standards. Okay, this, this was, this sex initiative is in partnership and it, it with, it was made in partnerships with advocate groups, youth, Advocates for Youth Answers, with contributions from Gender Spectrum, Human Rights Campaign, Planned Parenthood, and a number of other advocacy groups. There are not, these are not educational standards written by academics, but rather ideologies, ideologuing advocates by these extreme groups to push an agenda, sorry, I'm trying to go very fast. These groups advocate for gender of your choice, LGBTQ, and abortion on demand at any stage of development, up to and including prior to birth. They advocate for allowing young children to receive abortions, gender-affirming therapies, puberty blockers, and cross-sex hormones without their parents' knowledge. They want us to believe that children are sexual at birth and that they experience sexual pleasure as infants. They are extreme activists and they have their way into mainstream education. It is not for me to judge who chooses to live an alternative lifestyle, they have their free will to make their choices as adults, adults start at 18 years old. These ideologies have no place in our public schools, they can do very serious psychological damage to our children and physical damage to, that can be irreversible. Transgender ideology in schools is psychological abuse, and that often leads to a chemical castration, sterilization, and surgical mutilation. We're seeing a substantial increase in the number of children identifying as the opposite sex, much of this is due to children looking for attention. This is easy to understand when you have an environment where you can achieve status and popularity by declaring a trans identity, I've seen it myself, I've sent three kids through this school. It's not, and it is not medically accurate to teach children that there are many genders, and they choose which one to be, it is not medically accurate to teach them that aborting a baby is not taking a life. There is a heavy emphasis on high schools for creating LGBTQ advocates out of our students. They also promote abortion as being equal to parenting and adoption, they want our teachers to circumvent the parents and provide names and addresses of groups who will supply puberty blockers, cross-sex hormones, and abortions to these students. Okay, this is, this, okay, this, this is, this is very serious, this is crossing the line of what a parent is to teach children. Children are no longer children at 18 years old, you cannot sign up for the military at 16, you, you should take this into account and make sure that you let this community know, taxpayers, parents, grandparents, that this school board is not going to vote with this. My second item is on the English department's choices for books. My second item is on the English department's choices for books. There's 83 books on this list. Some of these books my children have read. I'm going to give you three, four, five, six, I think it's seven. This was sent through a trigger warnings website. This, this book, A Long Way Gone, 11 Triggers. Little Fires Everywhere, 33 triggers, including abortion, alcoholism, animal abuse, arson, bombs, bullying by authority figures, cigarettes, car crash, death, drugs, P, periods, miscarriages, sex, rape. This one, 18, this one, 19. This one, Just Mercy, incest, pedophilia, rape. This is what our kids need to be reading? I understand that there's lessons in all books. My own daughter said to me, "Why can we not learn from books that aren't so graphic in nature?" Violence, war, speaking of war, well, A Thousand Splendored Sons, 15-Year-Old Bride. The last one that I will take my minute to say is The Boy, The Boy Soldier. What is described in this book is war crimes, war crimes. This is not a book that I think, and I believe that this one is on the freshman level. Really, do our 14-year-old children need to be learning about burning babies alive because he was a boy soldier? I think that as a school board, as a school, you guys should really think twice about voting these books in tonight, and maybe some people should read them. Maybe, maybe you should reach out to some parent advocates who would like to see Books of Hope and, you know, The American Way and how you can do it, coming from nothing. Many people in America came from nothing. Do we have to read about wars from other countries where, or, or cultures where children are married off because their grandmother dies? It's, it's, it's not, it isn't, it's a, it's a hard enough world for these kids. Do we really need them to be reading this kind of stuff in school?
Mr. James Rody.
Hello, Board, hello Superintendent McBride. I want to apologize for not making the last meeting. I'm sure everyone missed me. I had other things going on, but I'm here today. I'm going to bring up the same thing that I've talked about before, and that was 205 deciding to join the appeal of the TRO that was issued. I had a phone call from Mr. McBride, Superintendent McBride, on the 27th of April. And basically where it came down to is that the information that I was requesting as to, you know, how did you guys vote on it? Well, he explained to me that the board doesn't vote on such matters. He also explained to me that, you know, he kind of took a consensus. He, you know, talked to the board. You guys didn't vote on it, he talked to administrators and what have you. But that strategically, we really couldn't say how you came to the decision to join the appeal because it is ongoing litigation. So with that being said, on August 10th, a final, you know, they're gonna, Judge Grishaw is going to hear it, and that will, and I suspect will be the final result of this litigation. So I'm anticipating that once that litigation is done, that maybe we can have the information as to how you guys decided to join the appeal. The other thing that I would ask the board members is that I see on their information reports that there's some information here regarding your, regarding Click and their 2022 and '23 insurance coverage. And I don't know how the board and if you guys dig into that coverage, but I would ask for a copy of the means and methods as to how they come to their decisions and how they defend. And you should really kind of know the ins and outs on the services and how they provide their services to District 205. It would, you know, it might be an eye-opener, it might be something that's good, it might be something that maybe isn't so good. You know, I'm anticipating that, that, you know, maybe getting my hands on those procedures and the agreement that you guys have with Click, it may be my next FOIA. But with that being said, until I hear otherwise, I am going to go off the assumption, Superintendent McBride, that you gave the authorization to join the appeal. Now, until I'm provided with any paperwork, you know, describing or approving me otherwise, I think that's just going to be my stance at this point. And I welcome it on, you know, hopefully August 10th, when this goes, you know, when this is laid to rest and the final decision is made by Judge Grishaw, and that it is no longer in litigation, so that information can be public. Thank you.
For public comments. All right, thank you, Mr. Rody. All right, moving on, communication, there is none. All right, and then you see our Freedom of Information request. There were two of them there. Moving on to our approval items. All right, do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the May 16, 2022 Regular Board of Education Meeting Minutes and the May 16, 2022 Regular Board of Education Meeting Closed Session Minutes?
Some of them.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's motion by Dr. Shaw and seconded by Mr. Lewandowski. Are there any questions to those minutes? No questions, okay, hearing none, roll call.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Ives? Ives?
You're muted, Mr. Ives.
Yeah, that was a Mike Smart move, sorry, yes.
Lopez Caniva.
Yes, all right. Do I have a motion to approve the meeting minutes from the June 6, 2022 Special Board of Education Regular Meeting Minutes and the June 6, 2022 Special Board of Education Meeting Closed Session Minutes?
Some of them.
I'll second it.
Okay, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and seconded by Mr. Lewandowski. Are there any questions to those meeting minutes? All right, hearing none, roll call.
Navara?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva.
Epstein. All right, okay, next, I believe we have Ms. Croy. Give us the financial update.
Do you want to approve?
Do you want to approve?
Expenses for? Sure, sure.
And then maybe Stephanie before the treasurer's report.
All right, do I have a motion to approve the June 20, 22 Board Member expenses? And I can second that. All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Travis and seconded by Lopez Caniva. Are there any questions to those expenses? Hearing none, roll call.
Ives?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
Okay.
Then, okay, Ms. Croy.
Good evening, Board. I just wanted to point out a few things in the Treasurers Report this month. You'll notice that, so you're approving this month the bills for the month of June. The month of June, of course, is the end of our fiscal year, so those are the last bills for that month. So next month, you will be seeing the unaudited financial statements for the fiscal, the end of the fiscal year. So that's one piece, so you'll, you'll see that's the end of it. The other couple of items I wanted to point out are, you'll start to see in the, the actual Treasurers Report, which is page one of the financial reports, over this month and then next month, more investments being placed. In May, we didn't, we started in June. As the taxes are coming in, what, what we typically do is we invest those taxes because our cash flow, if you look at the cash flow, you'll remember that we have, you know, regular ups and downs based on the two times of collections of cash from property taxes. And then we invest out so that maturities mature throughout the year to cover all of the expenses, okay? So you'll, you'll start to see more investments, the investment list growing as we invest that out to be, have scheduled maturities for each time we have to make payroll and each time we have to pay board bills. The last thing I'd like to point out is the very last page of the financial reports is the 2021 Real Estate Tax Report. It's the first month where we're showing, last month, we showed the final collections for the 2020 tax levy, and this is the first payments in May for those. Usually it's the, the people who have their mortgages where the escrow pays the taxes. Those get paid usually in May. And so that first distribution is usually, you know, those, those payments. So what you see there is the first taxes received on the 2021 levy. So you'll see the, in, by the end of May, we've collected 6.8% of that. By the end of June, we expect to collect about 50%. So you'll see another 40-some percent being collected in June because the due date was June 1st. Does the board have any questions on the Treasurers Report? Okay, all right, and then?
Thank you. All right.
I think you'll still have to vote on it, right?
Yes, yes, yes. All right, do I have a motion then to approve the May 2022 Treasurers Report?
Make them all.
Some of them.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Travis and seconded by Dr. Shaw. Okay, roll call.
Travis?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navara?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. All right, now for Superintendent's report.
All right, just a number of things to highlight. First off, Happy Juneteenth. Shared with the board earlier today that we'll have to move our board meeting next year on this date, June 19, 2023, because it's a state holiday. So shutting down all sort of state, state business. So great celebration of freedom, great to see Mr. Travis's daughter on a national broadcast last night related to Juneteenth. Really amazing, pretty, pretty neat. Just, I want to commend our building administrators for a great end to the school year. Just so many things that, that were just, just incredible at the end of the year. Mr. Dwyer, Brian Lester, prom, twerp outside. Just, we had five teams that were in the hunt. Unfortunately, Dr. Shaw, Lincoln Way, that system seemed to, you know, get the better of us in lacrosse and softball, oh, and baseball. But that, that's a tribute to your district where you work. But just amazing things. Our students posted a historically low amount of Ds and Fs. I think that's also a credit to our teachers really working to make sure that students are passing the classes that they need, need to pass. Really appreciative of Dr. Webb Ray, just something to share, second semester. Just in terms of scheduling with students, 2,704 compass sections were scheduled, sessions, excuse me, at Central by the end of second semester, with 14,372 students scheduled into individual appointments. Of course, we don't have 14,000 students, but that's how many individual, 14,372 individual appointments were set up to work one-on-one with students. At East Campus, 7,568 compass sessions that were filled with 48,028 individual appointments. So amazing numbers, you know, really that tells me that Compass is doing what it intended to do, gives students a break in their day, but also gives students and teachers access to each other. Did an end-of-the-year parent thought exchange, just right at the end of the year, really asked parents to think about the future. What is the far-off future? We had questions that ranged from what's on your mind right now as you look towards the future, as we kind of emerge from this crucible, the pandemic, you know, kind of get back to what we hope is doing some dreaming, really, to be honest, about the future of education, all the way to our, to our facilities. We had about 500 participants, they interacted with 16,760 thoughts. Here were the big issues, and I think, you know, sense of, of future is right here, right now. Campus safety, that ranged from bathrooms to more student access to marijuana, given the situation in Illinois with it being legalized. I don't know in your public life, but when I go to public settings, my, my school administrator instincts kick in because I'm smelling things, you know. To mental health, to preventing schoolplace violence. Kind of right at the end, you know, some events in our nation really corresponded, so campus safety. Student opportunities, many people really profess their appreciation for the kind of opportunities athletically and activities-wise students have, and keeping those going, and, and some of those opening up. Lunch, I have some data a little bit later in my report on lunch, but participants see the resumption of buffet, full service. That is happening, and a little later in this agenda, we're going to ask you to take the very, very first step. Interestingly enough, in terms of lunch and the end of the day, we had about 600,000 free lunches this year were, you know, used by students. This is about 2,000, 1,600 to 2,000 lunches a day. That's about how many families were getting that free lunch. One thing I'd have the board think about is we pivot back to full service, and then families have to apply for free and reduced lunch, and we exit the federal lunch program. My calculation is that's about $25 a week, $100 a month, $1,000 a year. Grocery bills are just going up. It is going to be interesting when about 1,600, 2,000 students come back, those families are back on to either purchasing lunch here or bringing lunch. That will be a new expense that many families didn't have for two years. And, and we meant it that way. We knew the pandemic was an economic pressure on many people. We didn't know what kind of situations our students were in. We didn't want any student to go without a breakfast or lunch. So free lunch was available to everybody, but that'll be, that'll be changing. And then finally, teaching and learning. There's a high value put on being able to be, over the course of the year, with your teacher, with live, in person. So those, those four things were the, were the top thoughts in that thought exchange survey. I do want to just take a, a quick pause about school safety and security. I think we have a responsibility as a public not to let incidents like Uvalde fade into our memory, just as a collective. When I talk about this, I really ask people to come at it as parents and how we think about our children in public spaces and where they go and are they safe emotionally and physically. One thing that unites a lot of folks is being parents. And I wanted just to share tonight, and I know the board knows, but sometimes many of the efforts that we have in schools, because what we do is so routine, for example, fire suppression. There hasn't been a major fire in the United States, you know, school since the Holy Angels Fire in the late 1950s because schools have some of the toughest fire suppression that you can imagine. And a lot of our efforts, you know, Mr. Thompson could attest to this, at fire suppression, just, no one even notices them anymore. Some of the things that we do that just have become routine for us. We deploy Year Wisdom, one of our school resource officers, a Lockport police officer, and then Cam Kazarovski's next year. We shifted for next year to a school resource officer so that all the resources of Lockport Police come into our two buildings. We have secured doors. All of our doors are secured. At this building, we have 53 doors, there's only one access point. All the other access points have to have a proximity code card, should be shut at, at all times, critical. And where students can enter is always monitored, eyes on with, with, with staff. We also have a secure vestibule. So a person has to step into a, into a vestibule and then step into another vestibule. So, so two times. We background check every visitor that comes to campus, through the state police database, make sure there isn't anyone here who doesn't belong here. We have a very radical thing. Mr. Dusterhoff, a lot of credit to him and his staff. If you look around as people exit, members of the public, we have blue alarm buttons. Anyone at any time from any phone or a blue alarm button can put the school in the lockdown. And that really is that if you see something, we don't want you to wait to go to talk to a teacher or go down the hallway. We want you to use that if, if you saw an intruder that, that was threatening for anyone. What?
Blue alarm buttons, like the time that you could, you could just press whatever?
Flip them up, and you can hit them.
I assume they're hidden because I don't, I don't think I've seen them.
No, I'll show them to you afterwards. They're almost now so, so present, you know, we?
Yeah, they had them in my campus when I was at Loyola, too. I just didn't realize their school had it.
Yeah, when we, when we walk out, Mr. Dwyer, there's, there's a number of them right out here.
I didn't notice.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We hire hall supervisors and dean's assistants to patrol bathrooms. Our faculty are required, as part of their day, to be standing outside of washrooms, in hallways, greeting students in the morning. We surveil our campus with high-definition cameras, another tribute to Mr. Dusteroff. We hold routine drills. We train in things like protocols like Alice. Most recently, we train in Crace, which is a protocol. We have a cybersecurity consulting service. Talked to Mr. Navara a little bit about this. Going to talk a little bit more next month. Even though it's a one-year contract with BeSure Consulting, so that does not require a board approval. Want to maybe elevate that because of our responsibility to also be present on the cyberspace and also the parent education space, about everything from threats online to sextorsion, and how important that is. We attend regular briefings, a number of my colleagues here, actually the organization, you'd be surprised that governs school safety is the Secret Service, and they operate nationally for us, something called NTAC, which is the National Threat Assessment Center. You might say, well, think about it, Secret Service, they don't want prominent figures, you know, the worst thing they want to have happen is a President of the United States or Mitch McConnell to be assassinated or harmed. So they are in the business of trying to figure out what might happen to those people. They bring their expertise to schools and have regular briefings online and in the area. One of the most important things, I think, NTAC will always tell you, you want to keep your school safe, treat your students with kindness, dignity, and respect, and create an environment that if something is making them worried, they'll tell an adult. We have that at a very high level. On the five essentials, which almost every student took last year, the highest ranking they gave was staff-student trust, and that is number one, proven over and over again the best thing you can do to keep a school facility safe. And then, last one, and this is not least, there are things here that are not mentioned. We monitor a 24/7 tip line so that there's a way that students can report safety violations. All of these are important, they're critical, but I think just working with broader society to keep our school facilities safe places, humanistic places, places that, for that journey through school are our kind places. Any questions from board members? Just, I think it's important just to review, what are the things that we do on a regular basis?
I think you're very thorough on that.
All right. Couple last things. District direct mailing, thank you, Mr. Slager, did a lot of the design on this, might have already landed in your homes, just to kind of review a number of things of the past couple of years. Really appreciated Mr. Slager's expertise, he had done some work, and obviously this is his graphic design. I'd like to do a mailer in the fall, but really profile you, profile board members, your goals, who you are, profile you. One of the neat things on this is you can click on a QR code, and that QR code will take you to a website that really becomes interactive. Each of the speakers has a video where they just sort of talk, they take their quote, and they really work it out. Trust Edge Experience, Trust Edge Workshop, usually in August, we'll do a, just a workshop for ourselves, but the Illinois Association of School Boards is offering a really great experience in sort of community outreach that is going to be in Naperville and talking to President Kenevan, Vice President Ives. All board members are invited to attend that, that is August 6th, and we've got a number of registrations already, so please let us know. And then fun fact, last week I just heard that Illinois has doubled its revenue in filming in Illinois. Who thought Illinois was a film location? Apparently Lockport is, but if you kind of looked around the week of June 6th to the 10th, HBO used Central Campus for their show Somebody Somewhere, and then if you looked just last week, they staged up all their trailers in the A Field. So it's kind of neat to have that exposure. If you have HBO and you watch that show, you'll see some features of our high school district here.
Is that so again?
Somebody Somewhere, it's a comedy, and thank you to Mrs. Castillo for working with HBO as much as you did, pretty cool. That is, that's my report.
All right, thank you. Are there any questions?
Yeah, next time they're filming here, can we have cameos from the board?
You know, hey, I thought there was...
They were using extras.
I was waiting every day for HBO to have a talent scout, they didn't come.
No, just cameos, I mean, like, not talent scout, just like, hi.
Mr. Navara, would you like to be like Alfred Hitchcock, you know, just make that appearance?
Just have like my arm there, that way people will be like, that's me, that's me. Make someone binge-watch an entire season of a TV series just to see my arm.
I do remember that when they were filming that HBO series, they were looking for extras. So, fine.
All right, moving on then. Okay, district goals, dashboard.
As board members know, every quarter, quarterly, each of the executive council members is responsible for one of your district goals. You have six district goals, Mr. Dusterhoff is responsible for a goal, Dr. Christopher and Dr. Huntington, Mr. Kandari, Mrs. Kroy, our two principals are responsible for a goal, and there, we keep a goals dashboard, and the reason why that is, is when you settle off the goal, it isn't accomplished in a snap of your fingers. This is really designed to chart over the course of the year how these leaders work to progressively move forward. Just to give you an idea on our first goal, which is college and career readiness, a great deal of professional development to work towards that, but really being in a place where we have six pathways and a partnership with Lewis University to move that forward, those career pathways. Our financial goal of months of cash on hand, Mrs. Kroy, sorry, I didn't mention you in my, I think I did, maybe I did mention you in my initial statement, but cash on hand is always right now at its lowest point, but it's not below six months. It's its lowest point because our tax collections are just starting, starting to go up, so we've still retained that six to 12 months on hand. Our goal with our principals, climate and culture goal, we really focused in on math because we know students struggle for math, and probably most of us in this room, really benefited from a one-on-one tutorial with our math teacher, and our math courses had a pass rate of 95%, which is a historic pass rate. We've just seen something very different than national trends, where many school districts are seeing attendance go way down, many school districts are seeing performance gone down, we've actually seen that needle move both attendance and grades in a different direction, but 95% attendance rate, very, I mean, excuse me, pass rate, very high. Mr. Kandari, as you'll see from the consent agenda, very busy replenishing retirements, new staff, leave of absence. We did have a funny, our demographic forecaster said that fertility rates are low in Lockport, not in Lockport Township High School, because Mr. Kandari has been fulfilling, I think we have 10 maternity leaves of absence in the, in the fall, busy with that. And then we recognize that the people that we bring in as our future teachers really become the future of the district, become who we are, and financially, we have been able to, with the combination of retirements and new people coming in, I would say break even, or as close to breaking even as you can. Mr. Dusterhoff has been very busy retooling for next year in every kind of technology way, from something we talked about today, using large touchscreens that we're going to start using at Central as another technology and instructional tool, and then in community outreach, public relations, Mrs. Castillo, many different things that she is working on, the direct mailing that went out last week, and one thing that we're working on is a company called Aptige, to have an app, not just a mobile site on your device, but anybody in here who has a mobile knows that if you go to a web browser and you use a mobile site, sucking up a lot of data, oftentimes slow, sometimes doesn't really, you know, not very friendly, but an actual app, so it's a little bit easier and a little bit more accessible. So those are our goals. Any, any feedback, questions, Dr. Shaw, Mr. Ives, or any of the board members in the room?
No, I'm good.
Sorry, you said 10 maternity leaves per year is low?
Uh, no, 10 in the fall, that's very high.
Okay.
Yeah. It's ridiculous, yeah. I don't think I've seen that in my career, Mr....
I know, I was like, wow, that's a lot.
That's a lot of babies being born, you know, but, you know, joyful, I mean, it's nice to see people starting families. It makes Mr. Kandari very busy.
Yes. Okay, well, thank you. Looking for that. All right, moving on then to our information reports, we have our principal attendance discipline reports, Mr. Beck, Hartley, I don't know, he's not here.
Dr. Webb Ray, yeah, our principals are at the same event, they're supporting Mrs. Adolf.
Okay. Good evening. Y'all get me instead of Dr. Green and Dr. Green. We were very happy to celebrate the 113th graduating class at a beautiful ceremony, and then those seniors got to go on to late night and have a wonderful experience there. So that was lovely, and then we're very grateful to the staff and the parents and the volunteers who helped to make especially the late night event possible for the students. This year, we have reached a record of 58 clubs and activity organizations for students. Over 2,000 students participate in those activities, and we set attendance records at our homecoming and prom dances this year. So that's all wonderful, and then even better, right now, we have students participating in the Skills USA competition, in the national competition in Georgia this week. We had, I joke that I'm the least athletic person in the world, so I'm amazed at the accomplishments of these students. Three state medals, several all-state athletes, three regional titles, and three appearances in sectional finals for our teams, that included three state championships, two third-place finishes, 10 regional titles out of the 15 programs that competed, five sectional titles and one super sectional titles. Those were baseball winning the first regional title since 2013, doubles teams in badminton, Megan Janik and Emily Pogwitz, and I apologize if I messed up names there, making it to the state meet. Girls lacrosse, Fran Friere is a national leading scorer in girls lacrosse, and our boys lacrosse got to the sectionals for the first time since we started having boys lacrosse here in LTHS. Girls soccer's made it to regionals, softball are the regional champs, second year in a row. Boys tennis went to the sectional meet. Girls track and field, McKenna Scocillas, I hope I said that one right, third place in the pole vault at state, Gabe Zacco, and when the boys track and field with his five career state medals. We had three boys, Ethan Gallagher, Nolan Lammerow, and Eric Ramirez in the four-by-four, and Jalen Falcon in the long jump, and Cole Silzer in the shot put. Boys volleyball, regional finals for the second year, girls water polo and boys water polo both went to sectionals. It's just amazing the things that our students are able to do. On top of that, 185 of our senior athletes finished the year with a 3.5 or better GPA. Looking at our discipline for the month of May, there was a slight increase in things like being tardy to school and dress code violations or parking permit violations. Those are kind of seasonal adjustments that tend to happen every year. There was a significant decrease in class cuts, and a lot of that had to do with a shift in how the deans addressed those incidences. Dr. McBride is going to talk more about changes in the discipline plan for the coming school year that really deal with shifting from a list of infractions and responses to looking at how deans can more address those on a case-by-case basis. And there is talk of the deans moving to lunch detentions rather than BIC and out-of-class suspension so that students are not missing class time. We also had our deans and social workers attend a drug recognition training so that they're better equipped to recognize when students are using substances and then respond more quickly to those. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions?
So we started it, the drug thing?
The training?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a training that they attended, so that it started, and BeSure Consulting does quite a bit, as does Kids Matter, sort of drug education, both for parents and for students, and obviously our health classes do that as well.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right, do they have a behavior committee?
Right, I am sitting in for Dr. Green, and then board members can see, and the public can see, if you click on the student behavior changes. Just to give you overall, thank you very much, Dr. Webb Ray, for setting it up, the changes that really were made was, rather than going line by line, infraction by infraction, what the deans have done is established tiers of very minor, you know, if you look at the behavior reports, I don't like to see anybody tardy because I know what that means both for the student, missing content, and for the teacher trying to reinforce better behavior. In total, it can get, you know, to be a real nuisance, both for the student and teacher, but maybe not as serious as other infractions. So clumping infractions together based on their seriousness and then aligning consequences to that seriousness, all of which is a desire not to use discipline to take students out of class, to separate students who then would fall further and further behind. Now, of course, the board is aware of infractions that are serious, safety issues, that returning to class could be a safety issue, or it could signal to students that just what happened, that's not right, that is not saying that that would not still occur. But if you jump back in your board agenda to look at the type of infractions that we see, what we're really trying to avoid is someone has an insubordinate interaction in a hallway over not wearing their ID and is disrespectful, and then that lands in a, in let's say, an after-school or a Saturday suspension, they don't serve it, and then that escalates to a full-day suspension. Now that student is separated from school, and you see academic performance plummet. What can we do to make sure that that low-level infraction doesn't grow into a large separation from school, is really what you're being presented with here. And handling those low-level with restorative practices, it really asks the student to think through, to counsel with the teacher or the person that they, for lack of a better word, might have offended, so that there's some healing that goes on there, and keeps the student academically performing, the reason why we're here. So consequences, but with academic performance still in mind. Our Behavior Intervention Center does an excellent job at keeping students plugged in to school, even if they're on suspension. We use less and less out-of-school suspension, more and more being present, being in school if you have to be in BIC. We just believe that sitting at home doing nothing is not a really great idea.
All right. Now, as far as I have a question, lunch detentions, they just go into a separate room or a separate area for their lunch?
Right, and that can sometimes be more consequential, right?
Right.
Because, you know, many of us probably looked forward to sitting with our peers when we were in high school, and if you're denied that, you're going to lunch suspension instead for your whole period. That is a little bit more of a serious repercussion for students than just an after-school detention or sitting in BIC, where that kind of social implication isn't there.
Any questions?
And just while we're at it, I know Doctors Hunting and Christopher are going to come up. Just for the board, always want the board to be aware of overnight field trips. There is one that has already passed, it was a curveball last week, our basketball team, summer ball, was enrolled in a downstate Normal, Illinois tournament, when the schedule came out, they had a very late game, that to get in a bus and come all the way back home just didn't seem to make sense. And then you can see later, right now actually, starting today, just your knowledge, that we have students down in Atlanta, Georgia, representing us at the National Skills USA Competition.
All right. Thank you. Our curriculum report now.
All right, we're going to talk about three items, which we've highlighted for you. One is the consolidated district plan. The second item is Dr. Huntington's going to talk about a professional development workshop that she attended with some of our colleagues, and then lastly, we're going to talk about our work with a solution tree consultant. So first, the consolidated district plan is something the board has to approve annually because it's tied to the federal grants, which we know decrease the amount of money our taxpayers would have to, would have to pay. So the consolidated district plan, it's built on from the previous years, you don't necessarily start brand-new. If Ms. Johnson were here, she always asks, how do you know that's working, right? So we look at things and figure out if it's working, we might keep it in, something like the tutoring centers that we have at the central campus and how we've made that really robust there, and then sometimes we layer in some new stuff. Particularly last year, we had a lot of federal grant money that went for interventionists. What this means is that when kids went on quarantine, they had an adult that was assigned to them to check in with them to make sure they were getting everything they needed off the Google classrooms in case they needed help with teachers. Right now, we don't have that slated to go in for this year, so... So it ebbs and flows like this. The purpose of the grants are always to help to support all students. And so the plan, I say, is ongoing because, you know, we regularly discuss our students and what we're doing to support them at meetings with you. We do it in department meetings, we do it at executive council, we do it in district improvement plan facilitation team meetings. We have a guiding coalition we work with. We also use a variety of information to tell us about what do we need to do. And so you know, when we did the DMG audit, that really kind of became a guiding force. And so we're figuring out, like, what do we need to put in the consolidated plan? But also, this year, I'd just like to highlight a few of the key changes. This year, one of the things that I put, I wrote a lot about because the grant, the Consolidated District Plan, they ask us questions, "How do you engage stakeholders?" So you know, over the past several years, obviously, we do meetings face-to-face, we've done online focus groups. But one tool we've really used that's been successful at giving us some information is thought exchange. So that's something that's new that's highlighted in there. You know, we've done thought exchange with our parent community, we've done it with our staff community, we've done it with students. And that's just another robust way we get information for what is it that we need to provide for students. So the Consolidated District Plan highlights what are the plans for Title I grant, Title I, Title II, Title IV. But then this year, also a change, there were specific prompts on how are you going to use SER recovery funds with these monies. Also included in it is the IDEA. So Ms. Croy, Dr. Huntington and I work on this collaboratively along with Dr. McBride's support. And so I just want to pause in case you have any questions because I know it's a really thick, dense document, but a lot of it is kind of recursive, you've seen it before.
Wonderful. I had the pleasure of taking a very small group to the national conference for PLCs. We did have a group that was supposed to go in...
January.
January.
Covid.
But there was a little Covid uptick, so there, those people that couldn't go, plus some other people, we rescheduled to this Vegas conference. I attached the brochure to the conference because I'm amused by it because there was lots of jockeying for different sessions that people wanted to go to. And I just thought it was kind of interesting to see the, what people signed up for. And, you know, I wouldn't let anybody double-dip them, like, no, there's too much to see and do. So we really tried to spread out and learn as much as we could. Like I said, it was a small group. The special education department was represented, social studies and science. So it was a pretty good heterogeneous group of adults that went to this training and excited to come back and utilize the information and the tools that they learned in that conference and implement those into their PLCs in new and different ways and continue this growth process that we're on as part of our district improvement plan. Any questions?
I will say that when we go to these conferences, we get really strong feedback from the staff who attend about being part of this immersive experience and then how it really provides clarity on the PLC team meetings they have and many of the other larger things we're doing with how they could be more systematic with Compass, which really brings me to our third item because these two things go together. Both of them are about professional learning communities. They're about us becoming a professional learning organization. We've been working on this for several years where we have a committee in the school. We've allocate, you've allocated time in the mornings for teachers to work and meet. And it's really an emphasis to where we need to be focused on collaboration, focused on results, and focused on learning. And these sessions help us with that, but so do a consultant. So we worked with a consultant from Solution Tree in the past. The benefit of having a consultant come is they really know what's kind of going on nationally. They can provide suggestions for us because they're really deep down in with us for what might be some ways that we can be better at Lockport. So this year, we are proud we're going to be working with Troy Gobble. Troy is the principal at Stevenson High School and has been in that role for ten years. He was vetted by a cross-section of staff. So we kind of go to Solution Tree and say, "Here's what we need to work on." They kick back, like, "Here's a consultant we think will really work well for you." But then we used our district improvement plan team as well as we invited a few others just so they can meet Troy. We surveyed them afterwards, like, "Do you think Troy will be able to help us move to the next level?" And the answer was resounding yes. So he is really going to be put in place to help us be more consistent in providing supports for students across the board, both academically and with SEL. And so when we talk about social, emotional, a lot of times that can mean something we're really working on, and that's self-management. So that could be something of when a student identifies or teachers are identifying that a student is not organized, how can we provide in a more systematic way a higher level of support? Certainly, this work that he'll be sharing will be something that will go with our PLC teams. So when teachers decide to play students in Compass, how can they be consistent and automatic and work more effectively together? As well as the use of our other structures, like the PLUS classes that we just implemented. So we are excited to be having Troy at our campus to help us move to the next level. So he's actually going to come in July and do a leadership team meeting really centered on language. What are the things we need to be really consistent on to help with the understanding of everyone?
And in my Friday Board update, you know, that'll be those type of events, bless you, Mr. Navarro. You know, type of things, we always welcome board members to come, sit in, learn with us. So I'll let you know that in the Friday Board updates. I'm sorry, Mr. Navarro.
The thing we could sit on is the one Thursday next week.
It's July nineteenth, I think, is the date.
I'm sure Ms. Johnson would like to sit in on that, for sure. Awesome. All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
No, thank you. All right. Moving on, we have our maintenance report, very busy.
Maintenance report, and Mr. Thompson is here. We both handle questions very quickly. A couple of things to highlight. One is you'll see later on in the agenda, we're asking the board to approve a memorandum of understanding related to the roofing here at East Campus, a far more extensive project than we even initially, you know, imagined. And we're using partially SER money because health and wellness related to roofing. But also, I think the most important thing is, you know, just for board members, when we look at the financial reports and you see a fund balance, fund balances are a result oftentimes of just astute spending, but especially in the operations and maintenance fund, the realization of people like Mr. Thompson, Mrs. Croy, myself, that we have major mechanicals and major roofing and structural systems that someday, just like your own homes, need a full replacement. And we're at that point with East Campus. We're glad that our operations and maintenance fund balance is going to allow us to properly deal with the roof here, but not pass that on, you know, to our taxpayers in any kind of debt or any kind of referendum. It's something that we can handle in the House, so to speak. Porter Store, if you have a moment, it is getting there. Drywall going in, that was an idea, curricular idea really, to bring the Porter Store sort of forward into the East Campus cafeteria. Our hope is that it has more access to the students. And there's a class that actually, an entrepreneurship class, that actually works, provide the products in the Porter Store. And also, maybe even, without compromising school safety, give public access at particular times to the Porter Store. And so really, that's all the outgrowth of a class, our entrepreneurship class that wants to have a real experience selling a real, real product. So just with a few quick changes, that store is coming together. I'd already mentioned a number of things about the school, National School Lunch Program. There's some data there for board members in total. Not only did we provide free lunches through the National School Lunch Program, but we also provided those for Fairmont Elementary School and Mill Kelvin Grove School. You've got the totals there, almost close to six hundred thousand meals, well over a half million meals next year. The first step in pivoting back will be later in this agenda to ask the board to approve the pricing for the full-service menu like we had at the beginning of the twenty eighteen, oh, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school year, I should say. Inspector from Will County was here. We have all the typical kind of stuff that we have to repair, fix, and remediate. And then we are moving forward with part of what we're doing with the auditorium, and that is, we are moving forward with some flooring issues, but we're rebidding the actual electric and sound and light. We had a very difficult time. The board approved that project. We had a difficult time getting contractors this summer. So we're coming at it again next year, December, January, February. Mr. Thompson, anything to add? Great job, great report, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Insurance coverage through CLIC, Ms. Croy.
When Mrs. Croy comes up, I just want to remind board members, one of the board policies that we have is, we actually buy board policy are required to carry liability insurance. So we do have to select a liability insurance carrier. And the primary purpose for a liability insurance carrier for a school district is really taxpayer protection. If there is anything that we would be liable for, that can range from negligence to court cases. You know, I know through closed session, a number of our board members are familiar with court cases where we've worked with our liability insurer. The idea is to limit the exposure that our taxpayers have because judgments and liabilities are really just a pass-through. And I know Mr. Ives is on the edge of his seat, and we'll probably hear from him, about liability insurance. It is to protect our taxpayers, so we are responsibly not passing on court judgments or liabilities to the taxpayers. And so liability insurance insulates us from that.
Are you going to put him on speaker?
No, he's already...
Oh, he's already on, yeah. You want it even louder, Mr. Navarro? Yeah, Mrs. Croy, just walking up. Yeah.
Oh, you did, did you?
All right. Hello again. So every year this time is when I update the board on our new, you know, renewal for our insurance for, like Bob said, property casualty liability coverage, school board legal coverage, fiduciary coverage. We have student accident coverage as well, cyber coverage, cyber liability, workers' compensation coverage. All of those coverages, we get through, all of those through CLIC, which is a self-insured cooperative of one hundred and forty-nine school districts for workers' compensation and one hundred and eighty-eight Illinois school districts for property casualty liability. That covers, you know, four hundred and eighty-six thousand students and vehicles, almost five thousand vehicles, twenty-nine million dollar, or billion dollars actually, in property and vehicle value, and three billion in covered payroll in all of those entities. The volume, one of the big benefits, of course, of being in a self-insured cooperative like this is the ability to get leverage when they're going out to seek these policies. So the third-party administrator for, so the board and the public understands the makeup of CLIC. CLIC is, has a governing board that is made up of other business managers of the school districts. It's elected by the body, right? So the school districts elect the board members. And then the third-party administrator that processes the claims and does all this renewal work for us is Arthur J. Gallagher, Risk Management Services. Our premiums, because it's a self-insured cooperative, are made up of multiple pieces, right? So there's commercial policies. I'm sure Mr. Ives will be able to clarify some of that piece, but there are commercial policies for reinsurance and such. And there are some pieces that are just commercial policies. But then for workers' compensation and some of the liability coverages, there's also a loss fund contribution. So they collect all of the actuarial estimates based on five years of history for all the school districts. Here's what we think you need to pay into the loss fund for this particular year. They hold on to those funds, they process claims, and then refunds potentially get issued after those years are closed out. This fiscal year, for example, we actually received an almost fifty thousand dollar check that was a closeout of a number of workers' compensation years. So that was money that this district has paid into the loss fund for those particular years, but we never had to pay out in claims. So that's part of the benefits and a little bit of the understanding of the makeup of our fees and our policies. There's also some administrative fees, but they're the smallest by far portion of this being part of CLIC. The biggest part of our premium, so to speak, is the loss fund contributions. The only significant policy increase this year, because actually, this was a very good renewal for property, for workers' compensation, fiduciary, there's been no change in that policy. The big change in premium is due to cyber coverage. Many, many cyber liability insurers have dropped out of the market. They don't want any part of it. So there are only a handful left, and they're requiring a number of things. They're requiring a large list of procedures and policies and practices that the districts have to do, including two-factor, multi-factor authentication, which we have implemented here. And if you don't have this list of mitigations, basically, cyber mitigations, or, you know, and review and policies and procedures, then you may not even be able to get the coverage, right? We actually have all of the things that they required us to have, and we are able to obtain the coverage, but the price is significantly higher than it was in the past.
Mr. Ives, you have a, you know, this is, I think, an important note that Mrs. Croy is making about liability insurance. So regardless of the liability insurance carrier the board has, the board has to have by your own policy a liability insurance carrier. And Mr. Ives is a board member in the field and what Mrs. Croy, and then our own experiences. There are certain things that everyone here, for your auto insurance, for your home insurance, you have to do to have that liability insurance. Or if you don't do that, if I take my grill, my propane grill, and I bring it into my kitchen, and I start barbecuing and I start a fire, I'm not going to be protected because I'm outside of my liability. If I drive an automobile without a license, I'm outside of my policy. And as Mrs. Croy said, if you just take a look at cyber insurance, there are very specific things that are, that CLIC is saying, "You must do these things in order for us to insure you." And that is across the board with casualty, property, legal protection. We work with an insurer, and every insurer is going to ask the district to take steps to mitigate loss because ultimately, they're in the business of mitigating loss, and so is the board. Because as I mentioned, we don't want to be in the business of passing on costs, unanticipated costs, to our taxpayers. Is really ultimately what we're doing because oftentimes, as Mr. Ives can attest, in, you know, there are a lot of zeros behind settlements related to these areas. So sorry to interrupt you, Mrs. Croy, maybe, Mr. Ives, if there's anything, you know, as we talk about CLIC that you want to add, maybe open it up for you, too.
Yeah, I'm waiting, I'm waiting the staff to finish.
Okay, great.
So the package policy for the liability coverage includes two million dollars of cyber liability coverage. And that cost is now, I now have that. I didn't at the time that I prepared this memo, but I received an email over the weekend that was updated with the cyber liability piece in it. And that cost doubled. It was twenty thousand dollars last year, it's forty-two thousand this year for that two million dollars. The last couple of years, the district also applied for separate additional three million dollars. I'm waiting for that cost. I don't know what that piece, the cost of that piece will be. Last year, it was around thirty-five thousand. I'm expecting it now, based on this, to be probably more like seventy thousand. So that's the update on the cyber coverage. There are excerpts attached to this with some history and some more information for the board of the policy pieces and how the coverage works. If there are any other questions? other questions about this. So the, the other, I guess the, the last piece that I want to mention is that, one of the other things that the, at the, the annual meeting that we received these policy proposals at in May, the board also does analysis on some of the other pieces that are involved in the liability coverage, which includes the attorneys that are used by the board. They do reviews on a regular basis of the attorneys that are used, so that they have a panel that are approved when things do come up. One of the other things Dr. McBride mentioned, mandatory coverage, one of the other mandatory coverages we have to have is a catastrophic student accident coverage, which is also included in this Click package. We also have a, a, a student, a, like, I want to say it's a normal student accident coverage, but it's for, for regular student accidents, that if our students have an accident or an injury in the, in, while they're participating in one of our events, co-curricular activities, sports, et cetera, and they don't have coverage, our policy covers them so that they can be treated. So that's also all included in, in the Click coverage.
Do you want to jump in, Mr. Ives?
Yeah, well, I'm going to add a whole lot. Stephanie did a great job. Companies like Click out there, it's a risk-sharing opportunity for entities. Municipalities are very popular to do that. They call municipal leagues all around the, all around the country. They're, they're, those are the ones that get exposed with the unfortunate events down in Texas. The municipalities could have extreme exposures, and that's what you've got to protect. You've got to protect the school assets from these potential exposures. It could be catastro, I mean, one claim could be catastrophic. Just because there's a claim made against us or made, you know, it doesn't mean it's valid, and it doesn't mean, but you have legal costs, and the legal costs can be extensive, and the way we manage that is through our deductible. You know, everyone has a deductible on their own personal auto policies and homeowner's policies and things like that, and so, once it gets above the deductible, it's, it's the insurer. It's their, you know, we may pay our deductible and legal cost, and then there's a loss, and that is paid by your insurer. Statistically, and by history, Lockport's had a very good history claim-wise. That's why you got the check back, Steph. You know, you, what year was that? What year of account was that?
The check was for a series of years. It was from twenty thirteen to twenty seventeen. So it's a, it's a payout over the, for those five years of claims, so.
Right, you know, with the, you know, which is pretty good, because they have, you know, they have, it's called experience when the claims get aged, and then when they settle them or however they resolve them, because the money, the loss fund that gets paid in, that, that's what they call, if you have State Farm, you have Progressive, that's reserving. They're required to set aside funds that are going to cover their claims. That's the only way an insurance company will be licensed and, you know, and approved in the United States. So they, that's how they do it, because it's a self-funded pool. If we went out and commercially purchased all this coverage, as you mentioned, our premium cost would, one, be very expensive. Two, the deductible would be higher, because they require us to take on more risk, and that caught, that's an exposure to our stakeholders and our taxpayers and our, and our resources that we have in the funds. And the, you know, and as you indicated, cyber insurance, there are carriers that have, have gotten, gotten out of that coverage, because there's still a lot of unknown with cyber coverage, or what's it out, you know? All it's going to take is one big claim, and that limited would be gone. And that's what they're, that's what the insurers are afraid of, and they're not willing to take the risk. And then what they'll do is that they have what's called reinsurance, and our reinsurance is, is insurance of insurance companies, and Click has reinsurance. There'll, there'll be a certain claim, they're, they're not paying, you know, an unlimited amount of money. There's a, there's a limit, and they have a retention. Insurance coverage called retention would be a deductible. So the, the product we have is, is valuable, but it's, it's necessary to have, it's required to have, but I think we do a good job mitigating the cost to cover those exposures, and you do, and you do a good job, you do a good job with that, and it is comprehensive, and it is thorough. So we are covered, and we've had a good experience, so we continue the relationship.
Thank you, Dick. Any other questions about Click or Process or any of our coverages?
Thanks, Stephanie.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now we have, a lot of these, as, as you notice in our board packet, we have quite a few consent board agenda items. Let's see. The only one we did, I would like to add a few items would be number five and number eleven on that consent agenda items, I believe. Is that it? Is that, no, is that, let's see. No, I'm sorry, that's, I'm sorry, no, this is, that was action, I'm sorry. No, this is consent. I was thinking of the action items. All right, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items number two to number twenty-one as presented?
Served.
All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and seconded by Mr. Travis. Are there any questions to any of those consent agenda items? Hearing none, roll call. Navarro?
I would actually like to add a note to item number twenty about the English novel selections. I just wanted to be able to say that when it comes to being able to experience the content of books, regardless of how graphic they are, I believe that when it comes to the graphicness depicted of other countries, that it is important for students who have the, who will be choosing which college they go to within, at the end of their high school career, they could easily pick a college in Germany where prostitution is, is legal. They could easily pick another country where the age of consent is much lower than what is normally here in America, and they could also go to countries that are torn by war. And so I just didn't want to just say that, like, by me saying yes to this, I do not approve of some of these topics, but I will say that when it comes to high school, because of how close they are to experiencing the rest of the world, it may or may not be, at least within the school's responsibility to at least be more transparent about some of the depictions of some of these items, if we don't already, because I'm not sure if we are transparent about some depictions, are we?
Yeah, all the books that we approve are available on the online card catalog, so they can all, you know, be accessed through any student, any parent can just log in, go into our collections, take a look at what that, that book is, what it, what its synopsis is.
The synopsis.
And then, you know, approval processes like this.
In that case, I'll just say yes to nothing.
Thank you, thank you for your statement.
I just didn't want to just say yes and not.
A comment.
True.
All right, thank you. You're welcome. Okay. Travis?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva? Yes. Okay, now starting for our action. Do I have a motion to approve the modifications to salary benefits and policy books for employees?
Served.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and seconded by Mr. Ives. Are there any questions to those? Hearing none, roll call. Lewandowski?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Mr. Ives?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva? Yes. All right. Do I have a motion to approve the non-licensed director salaries for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fiscal year?
Make that motion.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Travis and seconded by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions? Hearing none, roll call. Ives?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva? Yes. Okay, do I have a motion to approve the salaries for non-licensed employees not covered by collective bargaining agreement for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fiscal year? I can make that motion? I'll make that motion and seconded by, by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions? Hearing none, roll call. Travis?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva? Yes. All right, do I have a motion to approve the licensed administrator contracts for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three fiscal year?
Make that motion.
Second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Travis and seconded by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions to those? Hearing none, roll call. Navarro?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva? Yes. All right, do I have a motion to approve the superintendent's compensation for twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three as presented in the public agenda?
Served.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Ives and seconded by Mr. Travis. Any questions? Hearing none, roll call. Lewandowski?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva? Yes. All right, do I have a motion to approve the amendment to extension of special education transportation services agreement with first student? I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion made by Lopez Caniva and seconded by Dr. Shaw. Any questions? Hearing none, roll call. Navarro?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva? Yes. All right, do I have a motion to approve the food service menu for the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year? I can make that motion?
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Ms. Lopez Caniva and seconded by Mr. Travis. I do have a question on this. Are we going to have agreements like we did the same thing with, with Quest regarding, are we going to serve meals, let's just say, to Millen Calvin Grove at De Ferramont, and they know about the pricing and everything?
Yeah, we have a three-year prior agreement with them, so it's our second year of a three-year agreement.
Okay, all right. And then as far as notifying, we're going to let the students know, the parents know regarding the new pricings and everything, so that they are aware. Okay.
Right, because really the board is approving pricing more than, than menu.
Okay.
Right, you know, for most of these items, the items that we will have, right? But it's really the pricing that you're, you're approving, and you can see there's a wide variety from meals to ala carte. So we'll, we'll start that process, including all the way to welcome back days and freshman orientation, because it might take some reminders for our community of how to get your account set up and swipe and all of those kind of things. So kind of have a whole campaign planned to do that, including a student committee on food service.
Okay.
So, sorry, Dr. McBride, can I just one thing?
These prices are the high schools are paying the price.
Right.
So the agreements with the, the theater districts have a separate per meal pricing that, that's part of a multi-year agreement that, that the board has previously seen, but it's not recent, because we're in the middle of it.
Right.
But that's a separate per meal price, kind of like we had this year, because the theater districts are still part of the national school lunch program. So there's, this, this pricing that the board is approving here is the pricing that our students will pay when they purchase a meal. So that's the difference between those.
All right, okay. That's it, all right. So, yes.
Do we take a roll call on that?
No, not yet, no. So just, yeah, it's been motioned by Lopez Caniva and seconded by Mr. Travis. All we need is a roll call on that. Shaw?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva? Yes. Next is, do I have a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with the LA architects to create bid specifications for a roof replacement project?
Served.
Second.
All right, it's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and seconded by Mr. Ives. Are there any questions to that? Roll call. Navarro?
Yes.
Shaw?
Dr. Shaw?
Oh, yes, sorry, I didn't hear anything.
Travis?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva? Yes. All right, do I have a motion to approve the auditorium flooring replacement project?
Make that motion.
I can second that. All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Travis and seconded by Ms. Lopez Caniva. Are there any questions to that motion? All right, roll call. Lewandowski?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva? Yes. All right, do I have a motion to approve the twenty twenty-three prom contract with the Museum of Science and Industry?
I'll make that motion, second.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Lewandowski and seconded by Mr. Travis. Are there any questions to that? Hearing none, roll call. Travis?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva? Yes. All right, do I have a motion to approve the termination of educational support personnel custodian Liam Cunningham?
Make that motion.
I can second that. It's been motioned by Mr. Travis and seconded by Ms. Lopez Caniva. Roll call. Ives?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navarro?
I'd like to abstain for this.
Lopez Caniva? Yes. Did you get Ives on that, too? Mr. Ives? Okay, all right. Next, we had, do I have a motion to approve the press one oh eight group three policies?
Make that motion.
This is the end of press one oh eight. We've, we've been going since January here, board members.
All right, I can second that motion. All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Travis and seconded by Ms. Lopez Caniva. Roll call. Shaw?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Ives?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva? Yes. Okay, announcements.
Yeah, very quickly, I'm going to look to my good colleague on my right here. July eighteenth, board meeting. August, board workshop, August sixth, that's the Trust Edge Workshop. Kathy, if you've not registered for that, Kathy can register you. August board meetings, August fifteenth, and the LTHS Foundation Taste the Lockport, as we said, September twenty-fourth.
Thank you. All right, any other further announcements?
Yeah, I, Kathy, I, I made a mistake back when you were going over minutes, because I knew I was at one meeting and missed another one, so can we change the record to reflect? Because I bought, I voted for the minutes in the May board meeting as well as the June special meeting. I chaired the special meeting in June, but I did not make the May, May meeting. I need to abstain from that. That was my error, because I was, I was, I was out of town, as I am today. I mean, so I apologize for that, but could you correct the record on that, please?
Yeah, we can amend that, Ms. Ives.
All right, it will be noted, okay. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
I'll make that motion.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Lewandowski and seconded by Mr. Travis. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And it's at 8:42 that our meeting adjourned. Thank you. Thank you, everyone.